I appreciate it, thank you.
I want to welcome everyone here tonight. Thank you for coming.
Yes, sir, please say present when I call your name. Corbin Walden.
Present.
Shane Barnes.
Present.
Andre Dornell.
Present.
David Goff.
Present.
Lynn Goff.
Present.
James Johnson.
Present.
Andrew Givens-More.
Present.
And Marshall Moss.
Please stand before the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Martin, can you give your presentation, please?
That's right. Dear Father, thank you for this gorgeous day you've given us. Be with all of us, Lord, and as we go our separate ways later this evening and further days. Lord, please help us make good decisions, decisions for the children and for the best for our taxpayers. Lord, be with those that aren't with us tonight as they travel in your name, amen.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Goff, can you do a judicial statement?
Judicial statement of Jackson Madison County School System is providing equitable options and opportunities in a safe, caring environment to maximize student potential.
Thank you, sir. All right, we don't want to have any staff for student recognition tonight. Number three will be approval omitted. I have a motion to approve the present.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion passes. All right, the next is agenda. This will be E S B A year end policies, A B C report, and strategic plans in the June general board meeting. We met Monday night, what was it, probably at least an hour, an hour and a half, I think. I don't remember. Going over all of this, but now I have a motion to approve the present agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I mean, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. The next is a poll of comments. We have twelve on the list tonight. So we will be able to go ahead and we decided since it's just two more than ten, because we got thirty minutes. We're going to go ahead and give three minutes to everyone, this is like twelve. So, number first, Mr. Joe Holloway, please.
Thank you, and as a former educator, troubleshooter for education and various other things. I want to say first of all, great job, guys, superintendent, his staff and the teachers. But Jackson Madison County Schools educates everybody. That's what they're charged with and they try to. They have something for everyone. I have studied this, looked at it from several different directions. And Jackson Madison County Schools can provide work to provide any style of learning. The teachers, the supervisors try to provide something for everybody that way. Because every child doesn't learn the same. Some learn fast, some learn slow, some learn with a different style. There are several different, everything from traditional to Montezori. And I happen to have a little knowledge of Montezori, no, actually a lot of knowledge of Montezori. And our Montezori school, I'm proud of them, they're going for their Montezori certification. Y'all correct me if I'm wrong. They'll get it because we move forward in Jackson Madison County Schools. Now, several other commendable aspects of this. High academic growth. We've achieved the state's highest level five for academic progress on the value assessment. And what a great job our teachers have done in all these areas. Improved graduation rates. Look at it. I've taken over nothing but rebuilding jobs when I was coaching. Well, guess what? Y'all rebuilt some things that had gotten, and it's, the job's not finished, we gonna get there, though. Focus on career readiness innovation. Man, we should get really high marks in that, and we're getting better, we're doing more things. Like the Hub City Innovation Cup. I just have to mention a few of those things. And Jackson Madison County Schools emphasizes a coaching mindset to help teachers improve their instructional practices. Also, the commitment to teacher education. Back in the old days, some of the in-service trainees would joke, now y'all really do something and get some serious stuff accomplished. And I'm proud of that, too. Community engagement and support. School system's doing their job. We in the community, including myself, we gotta do more for the schools. It's a two-way street. We gotta get off our duffs and not depend on the school system to raise our children. We gotta be involved in it. And a variety of programs and services you've got, like the STEM, the magnet programs. Career and technical education, fine arts, athletics, pre-K. And if you look at the Tennessee Score case, it shows that Jackson Madison County Schools stands out for its commitment. Now, very quickly, Reader's Digest version, the wheat field story. That's where the little girl got lost in the wheat field, they couldn't find her because everybody went in different directions. Our commitment here has got to be community and board and everybody to join hands and work together. Because if we all join hands and work together, a school system that gets better every day. And I do mean that genuinely, can be one of the best anywhere in this country. Keep working at it, and we don't need any interference in it. Y'all are doing good, thank you.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts. I have always been a strong advocate for fully funded public school system and adamantly against any diversion of public funds into any charter school. That said, the goals presented by the Jackson Museum School proposal are very appealing. Reconciling these conflicting points of view has been challenging for me. In the end, however, I don't think we should risk our students' education, hoping that the success rate for this one will be different and not lead to further inequities in our education system. Furthermore, the integrity and credibility of this school board is at stake. The school district followed the rubrics sent forth by the state in noting numerous deficiencies in the charter application, even after revisions. To approve the application now would be like giving a high school diploma to a student who didn't meet the graduation requirements. This district has made great strides in boosting student achievement, improving the quality of instruction and gaining respect and support from the community. To approve anything substandard would signal a step backward and mar the positive public image the district has worked hard to create. Additionally, the precedent that would be established with the approval of a defective application is concerning. As long as charter schools remain legal and encouraged by the state, there will likely be other proposals in the future. And if the district bends the rules and makes accommodations for the Jackson Museum School, how will it draw the line in the future charter, charter of proposals? So while I do appreciate Dr. King's attempt to propose a workable compromise, I cannot support some sort of conditional approval. The idea of a hybrid charter school within a school on the surface does sound good, but the practical implementation would likely be unwieldy at best and could easily be an administrative nightmare. As you know, the overall success rate for charter schools across the nation is not encouraging. And a school that can't get its application approvable on second revision does not generate much hope for success, no matter how appealing its goals might be. Dr. Little has indicated that if this board denies their application today, she intends to appeal to the state for approval, as is her right. If indeed the state approves its application and the school cannot accomplish its mission, let the state take care of that problem. The state has in effect taken away local control already, as we saw with the states overturning the school board's decision on the ACE Charter School. If the state takes control of the decision, let the state own it. This board was responsive to the community input on the ACE Charter School and wise in its decision to reject it. Please exercise the same amount of caution regarding the Jackson Museum School. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Walden said, I'm Jordan Long, I'm an attorney and business owner in West Tennessee. I also, in my day job, run government relations, advocacy, and campaigns and elections for one of Tennessee's longest-running and most-successful education policy centers. I have almost a decade of public policy experience working on things like Fatisa Funding Formula, the Charter Authorizer, in 2019, the E F S and E S A programs, all while supporting teacher pay raises, incentives for public schools. I'm a proposed board member of the Jackson Museum School, and I'm proud to be one of those. We've talked about options, I believe options were talked about, or being a proponent of school choice was discussed in the working group. When school choice and options are presented to parents, as you can have options, but it's gotta be one of the ones that we have, that's not true choice. Charter schools are a wonderful form of education and have been praised by presidents all the way back, Clinton to Bush to Obama to the current president, have had bipartisan support for years. We've reached a point in education now where the best school may not be the right fit for a student, and students need options so that they can achieve what they need to in life, be prepared for post-K-12 education. I just remind this body that charter schools are public schools, they take everyone, and they don't turn anybody away. What Jackson Museum School is here to do is to provide a very innovative, hands-on approach, something that we don't see, we haven't seen in West Tennessee, but we can have right here in our backyard. I'd ask that when the Jackson Museum School resolution comes before you, that you would vote to approve it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
My name is Brent Boker, I'm proposed chair for the Jackson Museum School Board. Apologize for my handwriting, always had messy handwriting, I went to Huntington, so. But I'm here because not only do I believe in what the Jackson Museum School's doing, I'm a parent. I've got six kids. I live here in Jackson, I moved back here in 2018. My background has been in corporate world. I've worked for Amazon, J.B. Hunt, FedEx, Uber Freight. I've been upper management for a lot of these companies. I've went in and taken care of problem operations. That's what my specialization is, is going in and fixing what's broken. And having that operational knowledge and bringing that to the Jackson Museum School, I feel like I'm in a good place to give a lot of positive oversight, to make sure that this is done right and it doesn't fail. I can't stand to fail. I don't want anything that my name's attached to to be a failure. And we've struggled, you know, with six kids. Six kids is a lot. That's a lot of kids. Luckily, I've got a couple in college now, one's going to esthetician school, one's playing baseball, you know. But I do have a six-year-old that currently goes to Pope, which, by the way, the new school's beautiful. She's very excited about that playground. But, you know, I do intend to put her in the Jackson Museum School once we get it open. And I like that idea of that free magnet charter school that's open for everybody, for every citizen of Jackson to have that option. And, you know, it's something that I'm excited about, my wife's excited about, my kids are excited about. And I just, I implore you to be open to change. Us being Jackson, Tennessee, Hub City, we've got, you know, Blue Oval coming, we've got a lot of big things coming here. And a lot of things that are gonna bring in new diverse careers. You know, we've got tech companies starting up here, a lot of different things. So having those options for those people is gonna be big. And I saw at work in Northwest Arkansas where I lived for fifteen years, Walmart did a lot to bring in a lot of, a lot of different things, a lot of change, and it only benefited everyone. And I'm here, you know, like I said, as proposed chair to tell you that we will make this work. And believe in us, because we can do it, and we will. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Harold Carter, about the U S.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most of you are aware of our stance in terms of charter schools. We are very strong in public school settings. We know that there's difficulties at times when you're asking for the financials that helps you to navigate this system that we have. One of the speakers said that, you know, we educate everyone, and that is true. You do some, some work that not many districts of this size does. I am a very proponent, our organization is a proponent of public schools. We want to keep them strong and viable. We know that we need more finances to do the things that you all wish you would want to do. But unfortunately, that is not forthcoming as much as we would like. We hope, we pray, and we will come election demand. That a lot of these no's at the door that you are asking for more funding and more money will turn into yeses because our schoolchildren, public schoolchildren in this county, need your support, your help. And we're here to help you provide that. We want you to understand that we appreciate your work. We know that you have things that you want to do, you have a vision. We want to help you make that vision come true. Whatever that we can do, as a local N A C P branch, we're here to help you forge ahead. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. On charter schools, yes?
Yes, charter schools. I don't want to bore you with statistics. The gentleman in before me, number one, said a lot of the same things that I was gonna say, even though I know that you already know these statistics, but we wanted to remind you. So I will just get to the point. I'm here to respectfully request that you vote no for the charter schools. As a retired teacher, retired educator, administrator, former school board member, I have seen the effects of charter schools. Statistics show that five years is a lifespan of most of the schools. I have observed the shortcomings of them and even the ones that are, that are established with good intentions, which I believe that these are good people have, they still fail. And despite the great intentions, hard work, and dedication, there are numerous challenges for our students and the families beyond their control. I believe that we should not jeopardize or even chance the education of our students in the hope that this one just might work. What we have in Jackson Madison County Public Schools, we see the strides that you are making. We have lots of opportunities and options for the children. You know, and I know that there have been stellar people who have graduated from public schools. So once again, I just ask that we don't chance, take a chance in our, on our kids and they fail when we know that we have what works. So I leave you with this question. What are we trying to fix when we are already doing a stellar job? And I know that you continue to work on improvements. So please, vote no, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Excuse me, Ms. Victoria Toon.
Good evening. Tonight, you will make a very important decision. I hope you will vote no on the charter application. If you approve the application for the Jackson Museum School, that decision will impact our families and our community's social, emotional well-being for a very long time. As a retired professional school counselor from this district, I am aware of the tremendous wraparound resources utilized by our students and families. Our district understands that we must teach the whole child. And most days, our students and families have a crisis. There is always a parent or student who will share with us, there is not enough food in somebody's house today. The lights are off in somebody's house today. Or there was a shooting in the neighborhood the night before. Our school district, this district, has a tremendous, fast-acting system to respond to our students and families in crisis, the team of counselors. Our school system has prioritized our students' mental health and understands that underserved communities benefit the most from these additional wraparound resources that are built within our system. A vote to approve the museum charter would certainly disrupt the progress and stability that is available to our, to our most vulnerable students. The needs are being met right here in our school district. Now, there may or may not be many people present tonight from the East Jackson community, but I am East Jackson. I am proudly East Jackson. And most of my work in the district has been with East Jackson students and families. I'm dependent on you to vote our best interest. Think big about the needs of the needy and deny the application. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Excuse me, Ms. Tana Mercer.
Good evening.
Evening.
I don't know many of y'all. I'm Tana Mercer, and I am a member of the Jackson Madison County Education Foundation. I am speaking in opposition of the charter school today. But I want to first say that I am not in opposition. Um, but I wanna first say that I am not in opposition of charter schools. Um, I actually worked with a charter school before in Memphis. Charter schools have a good model in some instances, depending on where they are. This board and this community is seeing results from this school system. Graduation rates, TCAP scores, scholarships, we're seeing results from this administration. We're seeing results from you guys supporting Dr. King, and thank you, um, past board chair, James Johnson, for your leadership and instrument, being instrumental with bringing Dr. King here. All the things that you have voted on and all the moving parts that we're seeing are some results, especially with the morale of teachers, the morale of the administration and the students. We're seeing results and distinctive and definitive changes. With the obvious discords with the museum school that we talked about in the last school board meeting in terms of their building, in terms of transportation, in terms of you being able to feed the children properly, sports, um, we saw some of the same parallel distinctions with American Classical. My issue is not with charter schools and not with the fact that you're doing such a great job. What students are we willing to sacrifice and give them a disservice from a quality education? This is a startup school, and we wanna make sure that they're going from one parallel type of environment to another. If we're seeing the same type of definitive issues in both schools, I don't have a problem with that. But what we've seen from the past application and from the rubric, because that's the, that's going to be the deciding factor anyway, with the state hands down and based on the rubric. But what we don't, what children are we willing to sacrifice as guinea pigs to go to a system that they may not get the same quality education that they're receiving here? So when you vote today, I want you to think about the disservice that you may be doing and what children are we willing to sacrifice, leaving a stable environment to an unstable one? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Excuse me, I do apologize. I think it's Austin Goodman? Goodman?
Caitlin.
Caitlin. I really missed that one. I am so sorry.
Good afternoon. I'm Caitlin Goodman. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to speak today. Um, I have been honored to be a part of the proposed board for directors of Jackson Museum School, um, where I would be leading the marketing and community engagement. Um, I was asked to serve in this role because of my background in creative strate-, um, strategy, so sorry. Um, a community-focused communication skills. I've presented in years of building in, I believe, um, are just as important in education as they are in business. Um, but more than anything, I'm here as a mother. Um, my oldest child is currently a student at Jackson Madison County School System, um, and my youngest will start pre-K in the district this fall. When, um, Jackson Museum School opens, I would plan to enroll my youngest, even though my oldest will have aged out, but truly, I believe in what this school stands for. Uh, reason being, both of my children learn in different ways. My oldest child has a visual processing disorder and uses a 504 plan to support, um, although we still continue to struggle, to struggle with grasping the fundamentals of literacy. My youngest is full of energy and, um, with endless curiosity. Um, he is the kind of child that needs to move and explore and learn by doing. Typically, sitting behind a desk 70%, 75% of the day isn't how, um, his mind works best and how he is going to learn. Um, parenting them has shown me, uh, something that is so important, um, and it's that that two children, um, do not learn the same way, uh, or no two children, excuse me, do not learn the same way. And I believe our public schools can embrace this. Um, I also speak from personal experience. Growing up, I struggled in traditional classrooms. Um, I often felt lost until I found music and art. That's where I became, um, who I am today. Um, and I've seen how the arts can open up a child's mind and confidence. Um, that is where, um, that drew me to the Jackson Museum School. Um, it doesn't just treat the arts as an extra, uh, it actually makes it a part of how the kids think, feel, and learn. Um, and that's the, that's where real meaningful education, I feel, begins. Um, Jackson Museum School isn't just a new name, it's a new way to think about public education. It's still public, it's still tuition-free, built, um, but, but it's built around creativity, curiosity, and student-led discovery, the kind of learning that prepares a child not just for tests, but for life. Um, even if neither of my children would, would attend, um, this school, I would still be here today. Because I believe that every child deserves the access to any public school that they choose, that they feel best, that will, um, see them for who they are, support them for what they need, and help them thrive the best way possible. Thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. Sheila Godwin.
Good, good afternoon, good evening. My position on this, uh, on charter schools at this, at this point, I'm, I'm asking you to vote no. Uh, at this point, from working in the school systems, working with kids, disadvantaged kids, and kids that are from, uh, poverty-stricken areas, um, at this point, I think that they don't need any more disruption. I believe that Trump is already disrupting our public school system by way of wanting to dissolve the State Board of Education, Tennessee State Board of Education, as well as the State Charter Commission has changed some of their, uh, some things to force you guys to, even though if you say no, that in three years after, if African applies three times and you deny them, they can okay, give them support for five years. So I'm saying that you need to put your boots on the ground. And you, the kids' lives are at risk. We're already doing a great job, a super job here in Madison County. Madison County is under the spotlight for the work that they're doing. Teachers are working hard. We also already have programs at, at schools like Lincoln where you have community partners working with the kids. Why do you wanna disrupt that at this point? You do not. You really do not. So I don't wanna be repetitious and repeat what other people have said, but I'm asking you to keep your boots on the ground. Do not vote at this point for charter schools. We're not ready. The kids, the African-American kids are not ready. How many African-American parents do you see in here? How many African-American parents in, in that area have you seen say something? How, how many times have they went over in their community? You don't see any African-American kids, you don't see the parents. So don't vote for something and they're not prepared and they're not ready, especially on a project that's starting new. I'm asking you to please not vote for charter schools at this time. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Claudia Brown.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I come to you as a taxpayer, a granddaddy, a county commissioner. And I'd like to let you know what 47 years of ev- evolution in our county's school system has evolved to. I've had zero complaints about anything with regard to our school system this year. In the last three years, in concert with the state nothing but accolades, salutes, because of the vision, the innovations, and the initiatives taken by this school system. As a commissioner, I also take and look at the dark side of the story. Cause you see, I've been in the valley and I've also been to the mountaintop, but now I see the promised land. I see what you and our superintendent have provided to us in a broad-based education choices. I salute, I salute you as school board members, because, uh, the, the visionary can't, can't do it without the policymakers walking in step with them. County commission are exercising themselves as constitutionalists. They're not trying to change the constitution with their opinion and their personal desires. But the constitution says to the county commission, Tennessee constitution is that the county commission shall provide funding for public schools in the said county. I'm proud of Madison County. I'm proud of the people who have moved here because of the school system that we now have. Look at our community the last three to four years. You've seen faces at K-Mark and everywhere else that didn't stay here. I am proud of the school boards, especially the last couple before you. They weathered the storm. They stood on principle rather than opinion. I trust that you will preserve this school system as it is. Everybody has a choice. When I chose to move to Madison County, I chose the Jackson Madison County School System, and we're proud of it. Let's keep it that way.
Next up, our last is, uh, Dr. Jean Little's on GMS.
Good evening. I am Dr. Jean Little, as you already know. I, I've had quite a bit of time to prepare a, a closing statement, but in hearing the comments tonight, I think I'm just gonna speak from the heart, if that's okay. Um, every person who has come up here, we wanna work with them. The concerns that people have brought, we hear those concerns, and we do feel that we've taken every effort to be, um, a partner to Dr. King, to this board. Um, we do think that an authorization on the local level is the way to have that partnership. And just to speak to experience and guinea pig, you know, there's, there's really two types of charter schools that can come in. And whether we kind of like it or not, charter schools are a part of the educational landscape in Tennessee. And so that's going to be a choice that some people are going to ask for, and it's a way to bring in a new innovative, uh, design, a new innovative model to, uh, a particular city. So speaking on those terms, you know, the two types of charter schools, there's one that's a community-backed board, that's a community grassroots level. Typically, those are people who have not actually created a charter school before. Now granted, we do have a lot of experience. I have a lot of experience in school leadership. In fact, I think my statistics speak for themselves. Um, not only have I worked in West Tennessee for about 20 years, I won an award in Kentucky for the work that I did at the school where I actually graduated. Um, Carr Elementary is a school that is, um, very small. It's a turnaround model, and it is 70% underserved students, minority students, 94% high poverty, uh, 20% of the students were identified on the spectrum. So within two years, my team was able to take them from the bottom 5% in the state on achievement scores to average. You don't normally celebrate average, but if you were in the bottom 5%, you do. We were also able to take a teacher retention rate that was below 50%, which means the next year, over half those teachers were not coming back. It was that rough. And then we were able within two years to get that to around 90%. All of that's verifiable through the state report card on Kentucky's side. So I do have experience in working with, um, all types of students, diverse students, um, students, ELE students, um, special ed students, I mean, you name it. My heart has been in working with those students that a lot of other people do not wanna work with. So I also have the results that show that school leadership and a teamwork approach and the model that we've done, uh, quite a bit of research on, which I also wanna say how much I appreciate the time that you've taken to look at that model and your, also your charter application review team, um, in scoring it the way that they did, which speaks to me that the model is very strong.
Thank you, Dr. Little.
Thank you so much. Next on my agenda is the resolution of a Jackson Museum Charter School. Uh, Mr. Thomas, I see you got a bottle of water that's great.
I'm gonna read the proposed resolution. This is a resolution denying charter school amended application submitted by Jackson Museum School. Whereas pursuant to Tennessee Public Charter Schools Act of 2002, the Jackson Madison County Board of Education has received a completed charter application from the Jackson Museum School on February 1, 2025, the application. Whereas the board appointed a review team to assist in reviewing and evaluating the application. Whereas on April 14, 2024, 25, the board received the report from the review team and discussed the application, and during its deliberations, the board identified concerns around several critical areas of the application, areas which, though partially addressed, did not fully meet the board's expectations or high standards required for approval. Whereas on April 30, 2025, pursuant to TCA 4913108, the board reviewed and considered the application, the Tennessee Charter Application Scoring Criteria, the statutory requirements of the act, and the concerns raised by board members during the meeting and in prior discussions. And in the interest of public transparency and a clear understanding of the proposal, the board granted the applicant an opportunity to appear before the board to address unresolved concerns in certain critical areas that were only partially met, concerns which contributed to the review team's decision to reject the application. Whereas on April 30, 2025, the board found the application partially met the standards established by the Tennessee Department of Education and the board. However, additional information and clarification were needed in key areas to determine whether proposed charter school is in the best interest of Jackson Madison County school system, its students, and the community, and therefore the board by resolution denied the application. Whereas on May 29, 2025, the Jackson Museum School submitted its amended application to the board. Whereas on July 7, 2025, the Director of Schools presented the board with a report outlining his comments and concerns with the amended application and his recommendation to deny the amended application, as in his opinion, approval of the amended application was not in the best interest of the students, the district, or the community. Whereas on July 7, 2025, after the review team's careful review and evaluation of the amended application, the chairperson of the duly-appointed charter review team presented the board with the report outlining the review team's concerns with the amended application and its scoring of the amended application using the Tennessee Charter School Application Scoring Criteria provided by the Tennessee Department of Education. And the review team's findings on the standards and parameters provided in state law and regulations were as follows. Section 1, Academic Plan and Design, 1.1 School Mission and Goals Meets or Exceeds. 1.2 Academic Focus and Performance Standards Partially Meet Standard. 1.3 Assessments Meets or Exceeds Standard. 1.4 School Calendar and Schedule Meets or Exceeds Standard. 1.5 Recruitment and Enrollment Meets or Exceeds Standard. 1.6 Parent and Community Engagement and Support Meets or Exceeds Standard. 1.7 School Culture and Discipline Meets or Exceeds Standard. 1.8 Special Population Partially Meet Standard. 1.9 Conversion Charter School Planning Not Applicable. Section 2, Operations Plan and Capacity Evaluation. 2.1 Governance Meets or Exceeds Standard. 2.2 Facilities Meets or Exceeds Standard. 2.3 Startup Plan Meets or Exceeds Standard. 2.4 Personnel and Human Capital Partially Meet Standard. 2.5 Professional Development Partially Meet Standard. 2.6 Transportation Meets or Exceeds Standard. 2.7 Additional Operations Meets or Exceeds Standard. 2.8 Charter Management Organizations Not Applicable. 2.9 Network Vision Growth Plan and Capacity Not Applicable. 2.10 Network Governance Not Applicable. 2.11 Network Management and Personnel Not Applicable. 2.12 School Replication Not Applicable. Section 3, Financial Plan and Capacity Evaluation. 3.1 Operating Budget Meets or Exceeds Standard. 3.2 Operating 3.2 Operating Budget Narrative Partially Meets Standard; 3.3 Network Financial Plan Not Applicable. Whereas on July 10, 2025, after thoroughly considering the amended application, the requirements of the act, the recommendation of the Director of Schools, the comments, concerns of the charter review team, the scoring of the amended application, the comments of board members, and the comments of members of the public, the board voted to deny the amended application. Therefore, be it resolved by the board that the amended application of the Jackson Museum School is hereby denied for the following reasons. Paraf 1, the Jackson Museum School has failed to provide sufficient evidence to meet or exceed the standards established by the Tennessee Department of Education's Charter School Application Scoring Criteria in the, in all areas for all, for academic plan and design, Section 1; operations plan and capacity, Section 2; financial plan and capacity evaluation, Section 3, as follows. A, the academic plan and design fails to meet or exceed the standards because, 1, placement-based education, PBE, is relied upon as a key modality of instruction, although limited research has been conducted using this teaching strategy. And there are challenges noted on how this specific environment hinders the teaching and learning process. Further, research indicates that many of the PBE programs lack a critical dimension focused solely on improving educational achievements. Research further indicates that the implementation of PBE has a barrier based on limitations because of standard-based learning and test-based accountability measures, and then references cited. 2, intervention and enrichment is stated as a twenty-minute rotation, and this plan does not meet the response to intervention, Tennessee RTI, requirement for literacy and math. 3, the implementation plan for providing specialized services for unique learning needs is vague and does not address how specifically designed instruction and related services will be effectively provided for with students with significant disabilities. B, the operations plan and capacity fails to meet or exceed the standards because, 1, the staffing plan is insufficient, as the CEO, lead founder, principal is responsible for most tasks in the staffing of Jackson Museum School, with additional staffing support not being added until years three through five, and only one part-time academic coordinator, special education position is added in year zero to help with startup. 2, the professional development plan is inadequate, as professional development topics are indicated to be facilitated by the assistant principal, however, the position of assistant principal is not funded until year five. 3, while the amended application added a random list of topics for professional development, there is no strategic plan outlined for delivering professional development that is unique to the needs of the staff and students, and there's no accountability for its implementation. C, the financial plan and capacity fails to meet or exceed the standards because, 1, the proposed operational budget raises several significant concerns regarding financial viability, accuracy of assumptions, and adequacy of support for key student populations. 2, the budget relies heavily on unsecured external funding sources, including grants, philanthropic donations, and federal funding. The uncertainty of these revenue streams, while documented commit, without documented commitments, pose a substantial risk to the school's sustainability. 3, the budget included federal funding projections for Title I and Title III based on the total projected enrollment, rather than realistic estimates of the percentage of students who will qualify for Title I and Title III funding. It is not reasonable to assume a 100% poverty, poverty rate, or a 100% English-language learner-student population, as these assumptions significantly inflate the projected revenues. 4, the budget underfunds compensation and benefits in the salary line and does not provide sufficient detail regarding allocations for benefits or future staffing needs. 5, the budget estimates securing a building at nine to twelve dollars per square foot, despite much higher current market values in the area. This discrepancy, without evidence of a facility agreement or detailed justification, raises serious questions about the viability of the school's facility plan and its budget. 6, in general, the fiscal condition as outlined in the budget narrative lacks a clear cost structure and sustainable financial plan. 2, the approval of the amended application is not in the best interest of the students, the district, or the community, for all the reasons outlined in the Director of Schools' report to the board dated July 7, 2025, which is attached heretofore as Exhibit A to the resolution. In accordance with, with TCA 493108, and the rules of the State Board of Education, the Jackson Museum School will, shall have ten calendar days to appeal the board's decision to the Tennessee Public Charter School Commission. Adopted and approved this 10th day of July 2025, Exhibit A is Dr. King's report that he provided to the board at the work session on Monday night.
Sir. I have a motion to approve the resolution denying charter school amended application submitted by Jackson Museum School.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution denying the charter school.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Can we get clarification on just what a yes vote or a no vote means?
Yes, sir, I was going to do that. If we vote yes on this, we are saying we're denying the application. If you vote no on the resolution, you're saying that we are accepting Jackson Museum School. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
A yes is a approval of the resolution denying the charter school application. A no is a, is not approving the resolution denying the charter school application.
Yes, sir. Any more discussion? We're good.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate being a part of this process. I think it's government and its community at its best. Very weighty discussions and people on both sides who believe sincerely what they've said and just hold different opinions. I'm proud of the work we've done and continue to do, and I'm excited about the options offered in Jackson Madison County School District, and my small part as a member of this board. All of that being said, it's been referenced to what the state of Tennessee is imposing in terms of a limit on how many denials we can issue as a board, and whether that's right or wrong, or whatever agendas behind that, it's what we are held to at this point. With more charter applications promised in the future, I have no doubt there'll be an application at some point that I just cannot vote to accept, and a program that would not be conducive to academics, learning, participation, or ideals of civic engagement, growth, or patriotism even, in our schools and in our community. So, this is not that charter school that I can say I'm willing to risk my no vote, or my disapproval of, rather. And so, in spite of all the concerns, this is one that I'm willing to take a chance on, and so, I'll be voting against the resolution to deny, and hope that we can work together to see this succeed.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I speak on behalf of the East Jackson community as a school board member, District 6, Position 1. I speak as a member of this great community in which I serve. I speak as a student in the Jackson school system before consolidation and a graduate, my children as well. I speak for the future of my grandchildren who attend Jackson Madison County School Systems now. And I speak to the audience, to everyone listening, that we have a great system here at Jackson Madison County School System, and the, the possibility of a charter school coming into our community is really a disservice to us, because we don't know you. Taking a chance on our children is something that I'm not welcoming at all for my community. Feeling that we can do half of it right now, and we do a little bit more as we go on, is still a disservice to our community. There's never been any talks. There has been some emails that I received, and there were some family members that were added in these emails that were fraudulent, that were sent to me personally, and those people can be named as well. So, I'm disturbed in those emails that were saying yes to this charter school, because those people did not send those emails. And there were over three that I can vouch for, and they can vouch for themselves. So, that's kind of disturbing to me that someone would go to those lists to get some email sent, and it wasn't the community people who sent those. That's disturbing to me. So, I want to say today that I do vote in favor of denying this charter museum to come in my community in which I serve these people well. I love this community, and I'll fight for them in the best professional way possible to make sure we make the best decisions for them, and I stand by Dr. King and his administration highly, because we have something great here, amazing. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Ms. Metris, please do your call.
Yes, sir.
Before, before we do that, just to recap, you vote yes, you're voting to deny the application, and no, you're voting to, to accept them as a charter school. Ms. Metris, please.
Harvey Walden.
Yes.
Shane Barnes.
Yes.
Andre Donnell.
Yes.
Debbie Gahl.
No.
Glenn Gahl.
No.
James Johnson.
Yes.
Andrew Givensmore.
Yes.
And Marsha Moss.
Yes.
I believe it's six to eight. Our motion carries. Next is the Guaranteed Maxon Price GMP of Central Administration. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move that we accept the GMP on Central Administration building provided by Lashley Rich in the amount of $6,992,414.
I second.
Any discussion? I'd like to say I'm very excited about it, and I'd wait to get moved. It'd be wonderful. All in favor, I'd please say yes.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. The next is the Fixed Alternative Salary Schedule, LTS. Have a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Fixed Alternative Salary Schedule that we have presented in our work session and as a part of our packet tonight.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion passes. The last tonight is the Superintendent Evaluation Instrument that we went through at our work session. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Superintendent's Evaluation Instrument that was presented by our attorney and approved by Dr. King in our work session.
A second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carried. Any comments, anything you want. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Let's go. You have a great night, and thank you so much for coming out tonight.